Turn off the radio, off the radars, they're recording.
I'd like to call the Ollie money Salt Lake Foster Village Airport Neighborhood Board number eighteen, regular meeting agenda for Thursday, January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven oh five P M. Today, we're located at Awana Baptist Church. Our address here is two eight seven nine Pa'as Street, Honolulu, Hawaii, nine six eight one nine. We're also conducting a hybrid meeting. Our hybrid meeting is via WebEx. Our meeting I D number is two four nine three eight three one nine six zero two. Passcode is N B eighteen or six two one eight. You're joining us via phone, please ensure that you're pressing star six to unmute yourself and mute yourself when you're not speaking. Our core requirements of board members must be visible online except when full visibility cannot be restored after a connection problem or during executive sessions, most of public and board members need to be audible. Rules of speaking, anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under one minute. Those giving reports are encouraged to summarize their reports in their remarks under three minutes. We ask that you please call quote and silence all electronic devices and show respect to speakers and others in the community. Presenter should be prepared to present when called upon. During the virtual WebEx meeting, please mute your device when you're not speaking and unmute when you're requesting speed. Nope, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law H R S ninety-two. Specific items not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda by two thirds vote. We ask that the board members respect the oral testimony rules established for this term, which is that you keep your comments under one minute per turn. Board members may not speak the second turn. So all members were given the chance to speak. The conclusion of the board comment period, audience will be given the opportunity to comment. Yeah, please get a roll call of all board members present.
You have the sign and see. Ah Young Chung. She is online. Present, thank you. Larry Barrett. Uh, James Gallow. Don't see him online. Pauline. Patty Igawa. Here. Shonda Connie Mara told you she would not be here tonight. Joseph Amora.
President.
Jason Gamasa.
Here.
And David Yom. Not seeing. That's gonna be, uh, since present, uh, we have formed.
Thank you so much. It's been established that we have a form. We'll run into our public safety reports item number two A Honolulu Fire Department.
They are not here tonight. We do have a report from them. I'd like to send that for the record.
What's in the report for the last model? We'll go on to our next item on the agenda, which is item number two B on Honolulu Police Department District Three, Foster Village, I believe with us this evening, we have Sergeant. And Chase in a minute.
Good evening Sergeant Chase, uh, in a minute from a process station. And our stats for B three eight four Foster Village for December, we had five motor vehicle thefts, two burglaries, ten thefts, three U N Vs or vehicle break-ins. Our total calls for service for District Three was six thousand seven hundred and six. Um, our safety tip for this month is if you're leaving your residence unattended for a prolonged period of time, please use timers for your lights and your radios while you're away to deter anybody from burglarizing your home. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Or member here?
I'd like you to look into something for me. About ten months ago, I came to your location and I put in a request to have someone go talk to a resident about roosters. And I gave the address, I talked to the resident who said it was his son's bird, and he would talk to him about having a restraint so wooden crow. I had twenty-two complaints about this bird. I had talked to three different people in the community policing department. I don't know what the total correct wording is there. Uh, I was at, I was told and I asked for a return phone call, and to this date, no one's called me, no one's talked to me, and the bird still is there and it's still throwing.
Okay, um, I can look into you for that. Do you know the exact address in Foster Village?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
All that. I'll call you tomorrow with it. Are you gonna be on duty? When will you be on duty next?
Uh, tomorrow at two P M. But if you talk to somebody in our community policing team, I can try and figure out who took that complaint and see if there were any, um, enforcement or warnings given. Anything like that.
I'll come see you tomorrow.
Okay. And if it's still a problem, we was encouraging you to call nine one one. We can maybe handle it directly at that time when it's happening. We can monitor and see and hopefully we can take some enforcement action.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from board members joining us on beyond? Any questions from the community? Thank you so much Sergeant Kaminay. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, which is two C Honolulu Police Department District Five consists of Salt Lake on Ollie money. We have Sergeant Hallam today. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, yes, how you guys doing? Sergeant Kovika Hallams, Audit District Five, Kalii. Uh, going over our stats for the month of December. Burglary, zero for the month of December compared to November. We had four. Motor vehicle thefts was at four for the month of December, which was down from five the previous month of November. Thefts remain the same at nine, so November and December will equal as far as a month. Totals U N Vs, December, we had eight, which was up from a total of one that we had in November. So that's our crime stats and also, um. And our total calls for service remain almost the same. One was one down. Actually, we had five hundred and fifty-six calls for service in the month of November. It was down one to five hundred and fifty-five for the month of December. Uh, our safety tip and our security tip is, you know, just to warn the public, of course, to invest in the rings or video surveillance, but also to look out for each other in the, you know, in the residential areas. We've had unfortunately a lot of push-in robberies and assaults that have occurred throughout the island, um, as well as in our district as well. So we just wanna protect our Kupuna most of all. Our elderly are getting attacked, which is for us, anyone over the age of sixty is really considered to be the vulnerable age for us. So if there's any way that, you know, people can look out for each other, um, you see something, report it, and, you know, hopefully we can get people identified in that community. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Questions are calling from the board, Vice Chair. Yes, I'm, uh, I don't know, you guys, uh, because this should have actually been the fire department, but they're not here tonight. There was a fire where I live at Choppikana Manor destroyed one apartment and there's fire trucks there, but I've seen a police, so I'm not sure if you guys are are part of that investigation to find out what caused the fire and stuff. But, uh, it's, you got the first time of that investigation, here is.
Okay, well, as far as the investigation that after we're we're done at the scene, H F D actually takes over and they'll be able to determine the cause and the initial start of the fire to determine if it was whether arson or accidental, but that also will fall on H F D and will follow up later if it becomes criminal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from any of the board members joining us? Any questions from the? So much Sergeant, have a wonderful evening and safety.
Yep, same to you guys. Aloha. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Happy New Year. That was, uh, item number three A, Community Events and Concerns. Uh, this is where any member of the community or member of the board has an opportunity to report any event or concerns within the community. Vice Chair.
Uh, there's certain concerns, but, uh, the one that I'm concerned in sort of the my McDonald's gang at Salt Lake Shopping Center, I meet with them on this one Sunday or so. Uh, on the corner of Salt Lake Boulevard and Arizona Street, there's a hill across the street from the library. There's a hill going up. There's a homeless encampment that's gotten themselves placed there, and it's a lot, it's a hill going up, so there's a lot of trash bags that we noticed. You can't see it because a lot of the trees and bushes block it, but, uh, the concern is that they've, they're kind of like established themselves there and, and, uh, it's a concern that they're, we're starting to notice, we think that that field area is bringing in homeless people that haven't come into our area in Salt Lake before, and it's scaring a lot of the older people. I call that the senior gang at McDonald's. So, uh, it's something that I just wanted to voice that it's a concern.
Here.
We can have one person. Susan Corrigan.
We have with us Victor Flynn. Victor, are you aware of that encampment? I wasn't sure which which area covers that. Need military, city or state?
If it's.
On the hill across the street from the library.
From the library.
At the corner of Arizona and the Boulevard, that's Navy housing. Right, that amazing hobby, maybe housing's on top, and there's a big fence that covers, but there's a hill. It's kind of steep hill and it's covered with bush totally.
Yeah, see, that's the gray area. See the fence up there? From the fence in, that's Navy. From the fence out, that's the thing. Remember I gave you a while ago that agreement with the city and the Navy? City's in in charge of that. So you have the Paula Paula. I'd have to look if you needed another one, but.
Yeah, because I know the state is in charge of from the school to.
To the fence.
To the fence?
Then on the street side of the fence and the sidewalk, that's a different story. It's all on that Paula Paula. Who is responsible for what? So it doesn't matter what we say. What's ever written on there is what's happening. But I'd have to look for it. I think I sent it a while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Hey.
Wherever, uh, wherever beer. Um, Joe, just to let you know, about three, four weeks ago, there was two pops over there. They were talking to the guy that had the shopping carts. And he was arguing with them like as I drove by, and they also have an entrance off of uh, Arizona Road. They have two entrances to their encampment. Uh, the officers were there. I don't know what they talked about, but they H P E was there talking to that one guy with the shopping carts.
Yeah, and I still see that.
Yeah, I know.
I lost these.
Yeah.
The bus a lot and I.
Yeah, they're still there. Oh, by there did they still there? Sure, come on up.
Yeah. Just, uh, say your name for the record.
Okay, Leana Kim, Army. I live in that same area, just kind of across the road from the N E X. My husband's pretty involved in the community group in our neighborhood, and they've also noticed a big trend in new carts coming into our neighborhood, maybe related to that. I don't know, but people that we haven't seen before and their leavings.
Are there, is there anything that the the community, uh, organization that manages, uh, the neighborhood? Did they have they responded to the some complaint to them about what's going on?
I'll ask him, but I don't think so. Just, just kind of policing the things that they bring, getting them out, contacting the safe way if the carts belong to them and so on.
Also right across the Navy Exchange, there's a pathway. I go jogging there once, you know, through noon and I've seen there, if you go at six o'clock after six, there's three of them, and I don't know if it's increased in number.
It has.
It has. Thank you so much for sharing. We really appreciate that. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, one of our resident members who is actually, uh, joining us via our WebEx, Susan Corin Cheng.
Yes, thank you so much, and then thank you for continuing the hybrid. I am sick tonight, so we're all glad I'm not there live. Um, I want to thank the board also for, uh, number, item number five, presentation on the release of fire suppression. I'm looking forward to that. For the reason, um, I'm here tonight, this board seems very well informed on Red Hill and wanted to approach the subject. I am part of the shutdown Red Hill Coalition, and I was wondering if this board would consider doing a resolution regarding Red Hill. We know it's going to be shut down, but there's so many issues in the meantime, lack of transparency, the broken cameras that they can't seem to repair, the P F A League, um, the fact the Navy wants to repurpose. So, so twenty-three of the thirty-three neighborhood boards have done resolutions on Red Hill, and, um, just putting out there if perhaps this neighborhood board would also like to do a resolution on Red Hill, and we have kind of a template that different neighborhood boards have been adding to or changing and making their up. Mahalo.
I will thank you for sharing here with us this evening. Any other members?
Hello, Garnishinizu. Um, just the question on that homeless, uh, concern. Besides identifying, um, whose responsibility that is, is is there like a protocol that uh, is established that would address action steps to the problem? I'm just wondering.
I don't think any protocol set in stone, uh, but us, uh, this neighborhood board partnering with our partners that deal to U T S and our city council, uh, would help us navigate the process. Uh, we had gotten a lot of good traction, uh, when it came to the homeless on Ulo Road. Ulo Road is state road, so Department of Transportation using the ability to clear highways and make highways and byways clear of destruction, uh, use that clause in the law to help them alleviate the homeless network behind that area. This road poses a different issue because it's a city road. So that's something that I think we have to explore as a board of U T S, but or should, that's to answer your question, I don't believe we, uh, we're a specific protocol other than reporting to the mayor and partnering with our elected leader.
But sure. Yeah, it's also, it's, it may be a little bit disappointing, but, uh, we encountered something like this, uh, on the sidewalk kind of thing, and we found out that no one will do anything until they find out whose responsibility it is, military, state or city. And, uh, for some reason, this is a little disappointing too. They don't work together. Okay, like, uh, the state and the city, I would have, they came here and the state did a presentation last year, and I asked them personally, do you guys, wouldn't it be better if you guys work together in an organization? So you guys know the left hand and the right hand can work together in a sense, but the guy said, no, they have their own system and the city has their own system and it don't work that way and, you know, uh, and so I was kind of disappointed hearing that, but I just want to tell you that's, you know, that's the facts. I mean, so basically you gotta find out whose responsibility it is and then you just gotta push it.
To touch on that a little bit, Victor's already said that he'll look into it and since it's probably in military property, the people that Victor have are very good because when I had them look into the property behind the Navy Exchange and the freeway, they came up with exactly where ended where it started, whose responsibility, this and this and this. He's already said he's gonna look into it, so maybe by the next meeting he could have an update for us as far as the debarkation as far as who has what and where it's at, correct?
See, that's like disappointment in respect. If the Navy finds out it's not their jurisdiction, then that's it, you know?
But at least they'll tell us, this is the line, and and they they'll know whose responsibility the other piece of property is, and they've done a good job with several times me getting them to look.
Because without them, we wouldn't know that it was the state or it was the city, you know? And then we go in a continual, you know, sort of.
Sort of, right, yeah. So in that sense, yeah, Victor, the movie of child.
Mahalo for those very kind words. If it's on Navy land, we don't have to follow the same protocols the city and state has in dealing with the homeless. We do our best to take care and advise, but if it's over there, we would get the board's blessing, we would get our legislative leader's blessing, we would get Kupuna blessing. Once we get their blessing, that's it. That's it. There's action, just like pulling the trigger, and we get them off our land. And any belongings that's left back is dumped.
Thank you.
So that's what we have, and we do work with the city and county. We have a, a community, uh, uh, relations person that works with Chuck and he does that, but we we all try to do our best to take care.
I was also just wanting to thank the state as well for getting rid of that homeless encampment right at the beginning of Captain, you know? Because that was there for like two years or three years, and they are really starting to get to be a problem kind of thing, and they're gone and they've been gone. And I went last night and they're still gone since.
Yeah, one guy that was there, the last guy that was there, he's now making the homes.
Which one?
Across the street. Oh, yeah, I was in the inner day going through the drive-through, but, oh, my.
Uh, you know, I think, uh, this all comes down to, you know, like we talked about before, we play a cabinet office with our homeless population and uh, we gotta address our affordable housing prices, right? And that's what, uh, we gotta get our, uh, disadvantaged, uh, people who are disadvantaged from owning a home or being in a home are back into a home. So I mean, that's, you know. So we're gonna be talking about tonight, we're gonna move on to item number four A. Representative Aaron Lindo Hansen was not able to make it this evening. Uh, we're gonna, I'd like to defer this items uh, to next month because there's no objection. And, uh, we'll jump into five A, but before doing so, uh, I'd like to indulge the board if there could be a, there is, there's no objection to a motion of taking an item out of order, item number ten A, and, uh, making it five B. So after we take up, uh, the Red Hill issue, I want to take up a presentation and a letter. I do have a letter that I circulated earlier to membership present. I'll go ahead and make sure it gets out to everyone that. I know there are some concerns of letters that the chair wrote. I wanted to make sure we're fully transparent and have the letter available, uh, in case the board would like to make any amendments to the letter. But, uh, is there any objection to adding item number five E? Any objection from the board? No?
That's what you didn't have?
Sure. Yes. Any, any objection to adding item number five B? So sorry, I want to make sure. If I hear any objection, if there's no objections, uh, the motion is adopted and we have moved, uh, item number ten A to five two, thank you board. Uh, we'll jump into our, prior to jumping into five A, uh, there is a member of the community that would like to speak on item number three A. Any objection from the board to giving this resident the opportunity to speak on item number three A? There is no objection. I believe we have, um, Marissa. Marissa, go ahead.
Mahalo Chair Shingasa. I just, um, wanted to one thank Mahalo to Councilmember Caderro for her follow-up on one of the concerns we shared in two thousand and twenty-two around the state, the Salt Lake Boulevard widening. There was a request for a traffic light there, and we finally did receive an update that that is addressed in the, um, plan. So I just wanted to thank her for following up on that. But also I wanted to make, um, and share with the community that Moanaloa High School is having their first or they're returning to in-person for their annual Kina Ole event. Um, it's, of course, the fiftieth year anniversary for the school. Um, it honors the alumni from Moanaloa High School, and it's gonna be held at the Honolulu Country Club on February twenty-third. So if there are members on this call or in the community that attended Moanaloa and are now alumni, um, this will be a great event for you to make contact with, uh, prior classmates, but also to contribute to the school. Um, I will share the flyer with you, Chair, and hopefully you can share that out with, um, the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Go back to honor item on the agenda, item number five A. Uh, presentation report of the November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two release of fire suppression material at Red Hill Vault Steel Storage Facility. I believe we have Chuck working with us and go as, uh, hang on facilities, Victor Quinn. I was looking for, provide, give you the floor. Did we get a report yet, um, from the major general who was said that the report will be released within the regulated thirty days?
Admiral Wade, who's the Joint Task Force Commander, uh, asked for a, um, slight extension. He's reviewing the, uh, report, and he has said publicly that it will be released very soon. I don't have a date, but very soon.
Thank you. I appreciate that. If you could, uh, speak to the release of what you do know so far and then, uh, what the remediation has been.
Certainly. Do you mind if I just cover a couple of other, uh, Red Hill related issues too at the same time? So, uh, today, um, as part of the long-term monitoring, uh, water results were released. Uh, this is, uh, covering period through the end of December, um, as in the previous uh, monitoring reports that have been conducted since, uh, March nineteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, there's been no, um, hydrocarbons, uh, found in the water, water remains, uh, at or exceeds all, um, Department of Health standards. The other thing that I wanted to talk about very briefly too is especially since it's right here in, uh, this particular district is that the, uh, E P A is having a couple of, uh, town halls next week. Both of them are being held at the Awaku Veteran Center, which Foster Village, um. First one's on the eighteenth. That's kind of a town hall, uh, format. And then the one on the following night on the nineteenth is more like an open house where you can go to different, uh, display areas. So wanted to mention that. There will be Navy representation there, uh, but it's being, um, sponsored by the Environmental Protection Agency. Uh, so with that, I'd like to talk a little bit about the A triple F spill. So, um, obviously not a good thing to have happened, and we'll find out what the cause of that is as soon as the report is released. But if there is one silver lining, um, I think that it's the fact that the response was very fast and very thorough. Um, you could almost say that the response for the cleanup was textbook. Uh, Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Health will both say that the remediation, uh, was excellent. Um, we can say that as of this week, um, all of the, uh, A triple F that is spilled has been cleaned up. The outside portion had been cleaned up, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, there was some that was actually in the interior of eight at six in the, uh, tunnel that, uh, was completed this week as well. Number of soil samples were taken. Um, takes a little bit of time to get the results back from this soil samples because. uh soil samples because they have to be shipped off to the mainland. Um, in some cases, soil has to uh dry out, for instance, before it can be uh processed for testing. Um, but uh we're expected to have those test results back from uh soil samples and um, I would say I would be extremely surprised if uh there was any A triple F that remained in the environment uh when those tests uh are revealed. So again, the cleanup started immediately the same day, November 29th, that the spill happened. Um, excavation began that particular afternoon and initially workers were up there at the site working around the clock. The term that they use is over excavation. So you think that maybe the A triple F might have seeped into the soil a depth of six inches or so. Uh, you can see that there's, you know, some wetness or indication that it may have gone down that far. So what they did for excavating is they went much deeper than what they thought the A triple F went down to. So if it went down to six or eight inches, they would actually excavate down to two feet or more. Same thing, you know, on a lateral sense, you could see, you know, kind of like where the the impression or the the flow of the A triple F had gone. They went far exceeded uh on those parameters as well to make sure that they, again, were taking out not just the contaminated soil, but the soil that they're sure was in non-contaminated areas. Again, making sure that they were excavate, making sure that uh, you know, they're taking more than would be necessary at that particular point. So the cleanup included a collection of A triple F on the surface, removal of the soil, the asphalt, also concrete that had been in a culvert area. Uh, contaminated materials are currently being stored on the location, the Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. But they are being processed, will be sent to the uh mainland uh where they will be uh processed at that location, which is still to be determined. We continue to monitor and collect groundwater samples from nine different monitoring wells in the vicinity of the release as well as groundwater samples uh from the Red Hill Shaft. Uh, those results will also be made public as soon as they are available. Pending any questions, uh, that concludes a very broad overview, but I'll be more than happy to to address any questions that people may have.
Questions or comments from the board or member here?
I have a comment. Back maybe three spills ago, when all this samples were being sent to the mainland, I pushed and really came up with as a board, we came up with trying to get the state to have a state-of-the-art facility at UH so that you guys or anybody doesn't have to ship it off to mainland, which takes packing, shipping, handling and and on that end also, that we can take it right there to UH and get it analyzed and get our answers back much quicker. And I want to push that again is that it's time for the state to step up and say, we need a number one Class A lab to take care of these samples, no matter where they come from, whether it's private or whether it's the military. It it just, it's time that's lost that that we can cut probably down to half or better. So I really want to push for that facility to happen. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, my question is, um, do you know why they call it forever?
Certainly. It's because uh PFAS takes a very long time to break down in the environment.
Like never, almost in our lifetime, right?
Not in our, not in our lifetimes. That's, that's correct.
And I, and I know because going there and delivering, you guys are just the messengers, right, of this. But it's, you guys are like the gift that keeps on giving when it comes to the most horrific crimes ever committed here in Hawaii. Right? Loss of kingdom cannot compare to poison water, right? Uh, loss of sovereignty, um, any other, the massacre, you know? Any kinds of stuff that's happening here. Nothing can compare to poisoning um, the only water system that we have inside of, right? And so I'd like to guess to, and I know every, every minute I tell you guys to feed it back up the chain, right? And I, and I know you can't do nothing about it because I'm not the ones in power. But transparency would help, you know, um in my professional career, we are part of um, the uh people who are part of an informational team, you know, that meets with the the head of the task force. Um, but still, we find out the things that are already out in the news, right? But there's still a huge trust that needs to be built with the Navy and I don't see that happening for real. Yeah, it seems like consultation is happening to fill checkoff box. This checkoff box, right? Um, most of what you guys bring, we can we we can hear about is there on the news or uh outside, although I appreciate you guys' diligence and keep coming. Uh, but if you guys can feed information back up, it's, it's truly I mean, if everybody knew the economic circumstances that poisoning water will cause, businessmen wouldn't be running away from void right now, right? Because of the accidents that happen. You know, it's a huge disaster that's happening here. But every time I hear you guys talk about it as if it's just something that gets remediated. And I was watching you, I was just talking about the remediation, right? There's still no clarity whether it is still in the soil or not, right? And if it is still seeping within that soil. And if in the shops, um, how much damage that's done? And it almost doesn't matter what you say because every time the Navy says something, the report comes out and then we find out something different. And figure it's worse and worse every time. Again, it's the gift of God that this keeps on giving and giving for the last two years. Right? Um, so for my humble voice at this humble table, right? Uh, my voice is definitely more fierce outside of this room than it is in here, but I ask, you know, because you guys keep coming and dedicated to um providing information, take some of that, here the communities aren't satisfied anymore with um just being informed of the tragedies that keep happening. Right? They they just seem to keep happening, you know, over and over and and they're retelling us what already happened. Um, and the solutions come, come slow and and far and it's too many, right? Yeah, and that's all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. My thing is more economics. Uh, I, I know that Congress passed, I think it's a billion, was it a billion dollars for the Red Hill situation? Uh, two billion, right, two billion dollars for the Red Hill situation? And so my question is, uh, when will that money come into Hawaii, actually into the county books so that you guys see like nothing can get even started until the money is set? Okay. And up to this point, I know like a lot of people, you know, a lot of people on the community have been screaming, dump the oil, you know? Get rid of the fuel, why is the fuel still there? And people like me know that, hey, nothing's gonna get started at all until the money is there. So the money finally got passed by Congress. It's gonna come here. Is there a way where you can let us know when the money is set or is that something with the state? That they gotta, you know, communicate or you guys working together, the federal? So that, and then come with that, come up with the saying it with the plans, okay, now that we got the money, we hired these guys, this is the hiring we're gonna do. These other guys gonna be responsible. This is the plan. This is the timetable. And then at the end of this timetable, fuel is gone. Okay, uh, that's what I kind of would like to see. Is there a way where you guys can? Would it be with you guys or would you have to work with the state or, you know, it's a combination together stuff or how is that?
Uh, no, in terms of, you know, funding and whatnot, um, I'm sure we can provide you those, those answers, at least to to a certain uh degree. I can't tell you exactly where each dollar comes from, but you know, timetable wise, the Joint Task Force Red Hill has said that they anticipate having uh all the tanks drained no later than June of 2024. And money, generally speaking, comes through in parcels. It doesn't all come in one lump sum. So you may not see, you know, a billion dollars just dropping all at once.
Right, but you folks would have to hire some kind of firm, right? Or would the military have their own internal? That'll come in.
Department of the Navy has its own uh accountants who who manage all of that. And I'm sorry, I, I know time uh is a limited and it's a factor. But the one uh uh thing that I'd like to say to um Board Member Hind is, thank you for your comments. And because time is uh limited in these kinds of forums, if you'd like to spend, um, you know, a lot of time, you know, at a time of your convenience or whatever, we'd love to sit down and and discuss with you, you know, some of your concerns and we can go into a lot more depth, a lot more detail on some of what your concerns are. So I, I'd just like to offer that as, as a you know, uh, an option if you'd like to, if you'd like to take it. If there are any other questions, I'll be more than happy to address.
We have a question. Well, Melton, the board two questions from the I have a meeting member on the
Hi, yes, um, thank you so much. Um, yeah, I echo Board Member Hind, um, just the disappointment that we've all felt in these continued contaminations. Um, I have a few questions. Uh, I understand there was a video of the PFA spill and um by Admiral Wade had said he wasn't gonna release it because it could impact the investigation. Well, now that the investigation is over and the report is done and and Wade is looking at it, when can we see that video, the public?
That video will be released at the same time that the report is made public, the same day, same time.
Which will be?
Um, soon. I'm sorry, I wish I could give you an exact date, but it will be very soon.
Okay, um, my other, my second question is, um, I understand the area was paved over. Could you explain um what good that did?
So paving the, some of the area um with asphalt was done in conjunction with the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Health. Uh, this was areas that had already been excavated. And the concern was is that this would provide a better protection from the elements in the slight event that there was still any A triple F that was there in the soil. The asphalt can be removed if any tests come back positive uh for PFAS or A triple F. But it was a way of protecting the soil from getting damp and possibly having uh contaminants uh you know, get deeper into the soil.
I see. Thank you. And my last question um or concern, I guess, is you're saying this contaminated soil is going to the mainland, to the continent. Um, wow, that just seems like we're, you know, the Navy is is taking the contaminated soil and making it, you know, somebody else's problem on the mainland. I just feel very, very badly about that. Um, you know,
We're not just dumping it. No, we're not just dumping it. It's an actual location that uh cleans the soil uh and or stores it. I mean, there are a number of places, again, hasn't been determined yet what location it's going to be. Um, but these are environmental cleanup areas. It's not just uh, you know, put into a landfill or something like that.
Usually an environmental cleanup area means they're cleaning it up, not adding more contamination to it.
Precisely. So having uh soil that has contaminants in it, uh, this particular location would either remove the contaminants or would store the soil in a, uh, in such a way that it would not uh leach into the soil where it's there on the mainland.
I see. And that, and that, uh, that will be disclosed at some point.
Yes, yes.
Mahalo. Um, yes, thank you. That's it.
Hi, Garnishenliza, District 32 resident. Um, thanks for reporting. I just wanted to um clarify a statement you made that uh, water was tested up to the end of last year and you mentioned hydrocarbons, no uh, the level of hydrocarbons. Is that um in reference to fuel or the A triple F or both?
Those particular um tests are part of a long-term monitoring plan over a two-year period. Uh, the plan is to test uh more than half of all the different water you know, areas on Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam or those that are serviced by uh the Navy water system. And so that's part of the long-term monitoring that uh checks the water uh that's consumed by individuals on the base or surrounding areas. It's not related at all to the A triple F spill that happened. So, yeah, hydrocarbons uh is an indicator of fuel in the water. But again, there have been no indications of hydrocarbons since the Department of Health said that the Navy's water system was clean uh in March of last year.
So hydrocarbons would refer more to fuel?
Yes, that's correct.
And when you say no hydrocarbons, you're saying zero or within safe limits?
Uh, none detected.
None detected, zero.
That's correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to, uh, thank you. Thank you so much, Chad. Appreciate your time.
Yes.
Sorry, I had another question. When you say you over excavate, um, and and I, this is a really dumb question.
No dumb question.
Sure you guys are experts, like you said. When you over excavate, do you clean your equipment after the initial contact with the contaminated soil before you over excavate and go into virgin, clean, clean level of soil?
That is a very good question and the answer is, I'll have to get back to you, but I'll make sure that we get that information and we'll provide it to you so that we can have it even before the next meeting.
We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. We appreciate you being here this evening and we look forward to the continued dialogue.
I got something that's good for the community over here. So, Ken?
Heavy what you said, Nicole. You can ask these guys in the back. Tonight, they're gonna get my report. And they hear my mana, how I feel, how my family feels. They're gonna hear how you feel. And that's all, all we can do is communicate that. Don't take our people light, don't take our culture, our land, our water light. The result, shutting it down. So this is what I want to share though. This is a, a job fair coming up on January 25th. It's gonna be Hawaii Career Expo Job Fair at the Blaisdell. Navy will be conducting on-the-spot interviews with tentative job offers for multiple positions. Security guard, emergency dispatchers and other full-time career government occupations. For more information, I sent you the web, the website or just give me a call. And that's my good news stuff.
All right, um, I, I, thank you so much. I do want, I believe, uh, Representative Micah Ayus. We can get to, you know, we can.
We can, there's no objection from the members. I'd like to just bring a representative up for now and then we'll continue with the state-elected representatives at that time.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, board members. I appreciate you taking me out of order. I have to run to something right after this. But I'm so grateful to be here for the first time. The first time I've been elected and I'm so happy to appear before you guys and let you guys know what I'm working on, the few short weeks that I've been in the legislature so far. So opening day will be on January 18th. That's the next Wednesday. Please come visit me. I finally got an office a few weeks ago. I'll be in Office 326. So, and the Capitol is fully open. So we would love to see you guys come in and participate and, and share any mana that you guys have. And that'd be great. So also in the, in the future weeks that I've been in elected office, I had a Red Hill Town Hall at Manalua Intermediate School where we had some of these individuals that, that are being talked about from the Navy. Vice Admiral John Wade. Sorry, I, sorry, I took Aaron Johansson's spot. Yeah, so he, he loved. Yeah, sorry, let me, let me go back. I took Aaron Johansson's space. I, I represented Shik 32, which is Manalua Gardens, the Valley, Foster Village, Ali Manu, and then a portion of Palava and a portion of Aia. So I'm here today just trying to share with you guys. So just going back to the, the Red Hill Town Hall that we had, we had some of those individuals like Vice Admiral John Wade, Vice Rear Admiral Jeff Killian, Rear Admiral Barnett, and Dr. S. Bertu. And I guess the sentiment was kind of reflected by Member Hind, that it's, it's disappointing that the Navy couldn't be more transparent. But I think, I think the willingness to come to the table is the first step. And, and we'll see, we'll see how they, how they act. Actions speak louder than words. So we'll see how they act in the, in the future. But I think there's a, there's a turning point, hopefully, across my fingers. Just to give you guys a legislative report, I will be serving on the Finance Committee, the Transportation Committee, and then I'll be the Vice Chair of the Housing Committee. And I see some of these posters in here. So housing is definitely one of the very important things that we're working on in the legislature. We're working on not only providing affordable housing, but providing housing all across the spectrum so that we can house more Hawaii families and more residents into permanent housing. The legislature is particularly looking at providing housing to AMI in the 60% and below range. That, that range encompasses people with mental health problems that are on the street and people exiting prisons that, that need a transition. And we're looking at providing wraparound services. So it's not only giving them housing, but it's also giving them the social services that they need to make that transition. And then they can transition into maybe a higher AMI bracket and they could, they can transition out of that housing. So the legislature is committed, is committing to a whole swath of money and resources to provide housing. And it's really one of the core principles. And I'm so honored to be able to serve on the Housing Committee and, and try to pursue some of those forward. So with that, I, I don't have anything else. If the board members or the community have any questions, I'd be happy to answer what I can.
Well, thank you for coming. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You have some big shoes to fill. In my opinion, don't ever feel like you can't at all, Aaron. I'm sure he'll give you guidelines. And don't ever be afraid to talk to Reagan. Those are our two main people in this area. And they both know a lot about this area. So you got big shoes to fill. Good luck. You look like you're young enough, you can probably do it. But don't be afraid to cross the lines and I don't know if you're Democrat or Republican. I don't really care. Just, I care about the community. So when the community comes, talk to people and find out what happened in the past and get up to date before you make a wrong move. And I wouldn't like you to do that. So good luck.
Definitely. Thank you for the advice.
My turn, boy. Yeah, also congratulations for victory and a step forward in your career. And hey, I guess I just had maybe one or two questions. But the big one is happy, just wanted to lay a suggestion down, I guess, oh, two questions. Are you guys working, is there a, a system where the state is working with the city again on this housing crisis? I mean, this homeless and housing crisis thing?
Yeah, we're definitely working together. And there are some, there, without getting overly technical, HHFDC has this thing called Boncap. And that's kind of allocated between all the counties, but it's a state-run agency. And so the city and the state is trying to navigate the, this Boncap and trying to share in Boncap funds so that we can offer lower interest rate housing through this Boncap program to more developers and make it more accessible. So it, it's going to take a cooperative effort to, to provide more housing. And I think it can also proceed on both tracks, you know? We can work together and, you know, if the city builds housing and the state builds housing separately, we, we both, it's a desperate need that we need more housing. So we're not opposed to, you know, working on two tracks or working together when it's appropriate. But we're definitely working together.
Also, the second thing was, I've heard that Elon Musk has developed this, like, there's, they bought this company that's selling like 50,000, actually, they loaded 10,000 to 15,000, but now it's up to 50,000. If there's a way, maybe, you know, you guys could work with, contact his organization, see if they can get those houses, they're like, they're, they fit in a little wagon. You can drive the thing down and just snap them up together like within, you know, an hour's time. You get a house set up, you know, it's a small house kind of thing. If we can get something like that, because that's, that's an incredible thing that they're doing. And it's supposedly really, really cheap and may, might be even bargaining that down even further. But that's just.
Okay, I appreciate that. Well, I'll definitely try to explore that. I'm hoping to new creative solutions to solve some of Hawaii's problems.
Whatever. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Who's your parents?
Donna Kim and Robert Ayu.
You come from a long lineage of political awareness and such. So congratulations on carrying on the family tradition. You know, but I just wanted to make sure before I said that, I think that's the first time, but not sure. And I want to echo what Baron Rivera has said about working with the city. The city has, you know, St. Kali of Honolulu provides the most, you know, houseless individuals in here. And they've worked tirelessly, especially over the last decade, to come up with some creative solutions, both from the previous mayor's term to this one. Yeah, so, yeah, look towards, we, we have a gem here on Oahu because we have a very vibrant and rigorous group of county officials here. Just by nature of the amount of people we have. But also, I know you're going to get this probably echoed as the Vice Chair of Housing, who's the Chair?
Hashimoto, Troy Hashimoto.
You guys are going to get this from other constituents that are outside of the district because we don't have any homesteads in, in our district right now. But look towards the Department of Fine Homeland and the homesteaders as an avenue, as a solution towards low income, like getting people who are both on the homestead list to the advantage of the unique ability of the Department of Fine Homeland. And there, there's a lot of potential there to, to do things that can't be done in a regular system. And if you guys can maximize that too, you might be able to, to get some houses, individuals who are native Hawaiian into the spaces and get the benefits of what Department of Fine Homeland can do. Not that many legislators, especially usually freshman legislators, understand the homestead act. If you can, and I know nobody else in our district is going to talk about it, but I want to, you know, continue as, as a native Hawaiian, who's in your district? To see them as a solution, you know, as part of the solution for where you guys use it for your own housing problems.
Thank you. I'm also native Hawaiian, so I, I appreciate that. And we've been having finance briefings for the last few days. And, and today was Department of Fine Homeland. So Nikaka Anderson was there to talk about his plans for more housing. And they're definitely looking for more options. Not only, you know, fields and farms for, you know, natives to farm on, but looking at rentals in Metro Honolulu, trying to, trying to get the whole, you know, swath of spectrum of housing. So I, I'm, the legislature appropriated $600 million to them last session. So we're hoping that they can use the money quickly and wisely and we can see some.
And they can bring in other monies that the state can't touch, right? Unless the HAZA money is other government financial section comment, that the state can bet.
Of course.
For native Hawaiian.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Representative. You go first. A lot of questions. Welcome to our neighborhood. Congratulations. There's no other question. We appreciate you being here this evening and we look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mama. She knows me real well.
Okay.
I remember you as a little boy.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
We want to add number four B, which is the letter of support for the Kohoa Pili for the housing project located at 2965 Alana Po'aa Place. Well, with us, we have our Salt Lake Housing Partners, Chris Duker, Mo Hana, with the Farm Partners and High Ridge Costa. But members, there was a letter that was circulated to members who were present here. I do have a copy for you, Number Ayu Chau. But if you'd like, we can also read the letter. But I'd like to open up the door to our Salt Lake Housing Partners to, they came back in July of last year and they're back again. This is quite fitting. They were in front of the Council Zoning Committee yesterday. And they'll be going to full council. And so being that this is the last developed property, the last vacant, large, high-density developed property, underdeveloped property, undeveloped property in Salt Lake, it's very important that this board either support this project or provide their phenomenal.
Aloha, Kako, everyone. Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you all for the opportunity to come back and share with you sort of progress that we've had since last June. I think it was when we came in and presented the project. It's nice. It's a little more open. It's now that we're out of COVID. So good to see you all again face to face. Really excited to be here again and just provide you with an update on our project, Kohoa Pili. As you all know, it's located at 2965 Alana Po'aa. And I'm here with my partners tonight, Mo Hana from High Ridge Costa, Scott Settle from the AHEAD Non-Habit Foundation. And as Chair had mentioned yesterday, we were before the City Council Zoning Committee. Well, actually, let me back up. Since we last saw you, we've been busy the last several months. We submitted our 201H entitlement application through HHFDC. It was processed through HHFDC, approved, and then it was submitted to City Council. As I said, we just met with the City Council Committee, zoning committee yesterday. We were approved. Thank you, Councilmember Cordero, for your support. And, and so we are going to full council in two weeks on Wednesday for hopefully final approval. Again, as a refresh, we have 190 units that we have designed on the site. All rentals, all affordable, from 30% AMI to 60% AMI. So it's really the low-income brackets that we're hitting. We've actually entitled this under a dual track. So we're, we're moving forward with entitlements to do the rentals and the low income. But that's an oversubscribed program at times. So if we're unable to get the financing through the state, working with HHFDC, we have the ability in, after two applications, that we would switch and do a for-sale program. We're not expecting that. We expect that we're going to receive our financing. But we wanted to have the ability in case we're not able to get that, that we can still fill some form of affordable housing. And so that's really what we're driven in, in all about is the rental program. Parking, I know, was an issue that had come up before at our last neighborhood board. We do have, I just want to remind you, 227 stalls. More than actually the city requires or really some of the DPP staff wanted. But we know it's an issue. We wanted to make sure that we provided more stalls than units. The, if, if council approves us, which we're hopeful for in two weeks, we would submit for our HHFDC financing in February. And if we do receive an allocation in August, we would start construction sometime in the fall of 2024. And then we would be finished in 2026, about summer of 2026. And with that, Mo, is there anything else you'd like to add or Scott?
If you're here with any questions, this is our mission of what we do. Changing lives. This is a, this is, to be clear, 60-plus years of restricted affordability on 100% of the units. It is a program administered by the state agency HHFDC. They publish and dictate the rents. The rents are then further reduced by a utility allowance published also by the state. And it is that net amount after the utility allowance deduction that the renters will pay. The program is monitored by the state for compliance purposes to make sure that income is complied with, number of people living in the units is complied with. This is a family development. Keep in mind, typically, we've seen five to seven years, they actually save and move on. And therefore, this will serve generation after generation for 60 years plus.
Questions? Do the board members want to take a look at the photos at all, like maybe walk through?
I just have some questions.
Uh, Board Member Bear.
These, these two pictures here. How many stories tall is that building right there?
We are 19 stories of residential above.
The parking, the parking. Okay. Now, when, I do believe when you first came here or last came here.
Yes.
I wasn't here. I was, we were, we, we were in that room and I was trying to get in Zoom and we had a hard time getting a look down. So I had a lot of after. Your.
Land questions.
So my question is, is that diagram right there now, is that with the 10-story you were asking to have added? Because I do believe that's when you last came to us, you wanted to go up 10-plus stories.
No, actually, this is what we had come to the neighborhood board with last June. So we haven't changed that. It's, sorry.
It doesn't include the 10-stories. It could go up 10 more stories than that.
I'm not, I don't know if I understand. The current height limit on the property is for 150 feet. This, this building is 250 feet. So.
This has the 10 extra stories added on to it?
This has extra stories above what is under the current zoning.
For permission to this, the council is to build that.
Yes.
As is not the one that you originally submitted.
I think you're thinking there was a previous project prior to us getting involved that might have been that one that was under the original zoning several years ago.
I thought the last time you came here, you were asking for variance to get 10 more stories put on top of what you had started.
I think it was just 100 foot difference.
100.
Yeah, 100 feet difference.
Well, that's 10 stories. Right.
It's depending on your floors, roughly speaking, yes. Within, within the city and the state, there's an allowance. It's called a 201H entitlement. And you get variances to heights, density, things of that nature, if you're providing affordable housing. It's a way that we can help tackle the crisis that we're in right now. And so the ask is, as part of our entitlements, is that we be allowed to go from that 150-foot height limit, which is on the site currently, to 250 feet.
That's the 250.
Yeah, that is 250 feet. And when we looked at it too originally, it was important to us, you know, we, we look at the context of the community and you can see, obviously, you know this community. There's a lot of high rises in the area. We thought about pushing it even higher just so we could provide more affordable housing. But, you know, it gets to be too much on a site of this size. And so that's where we ended up.
There is no change to the height, number of stories, number of meters for parking, or this drawing that we're using here. This is the exact same board. So I think it's just the.
Have you gotten the permission to go up another 100 feet? Have you gotten the permission to go up another hundred feet?
The full permission is the City Council on the twenty-fifth, correct?
Right, okay.
Sorry.
But this is what you're asking for, but it hasn't been approved yet.
Correct, correct.
And that's strictly by the height. You added a hundred feet.
That is part of it, yes.
So if you don't get the hundred feet exemption, will you still build the unit without the extra hundred feet?
The the way the City Council works, the plans that were reviewed by the planning department, is what is under consideration. They either accept it or deny it. So the answer, if they don't accept it, the project doesn't move forward. We have to redesign it and come back. Question perhaps is, would we redesign it and come back by a hundred feet? The answer is no, because the honorfulness would not be feasible.
And in your, in this letter here states that you have a hundred and ninety dwellings.
Hundred and ninety.
Yes, you have.
Homes.
Yes, right. How many of those units are going to be affordable?
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent?
With one of the hundred and ninety units being an onsite resident manager. So technically, one hundred and eighty-nine units would be one hundred percent affordable at sixty percent area median income and rents for a period of not less than sixty years.
And I would add too, within that, there's twenty units that would be at thirty percent AMI and.
Sorry, ten at thirty, ten at fifty, and the rest.
Twenty and twenty.
Oh, number of.
About ten percent, twenty units, twenty homes, and would be at thirty percent and twenty homes at fifty percent, and the remaining would be at sixty percent AMI.
Which is well. Below the standard.
That is, that is really where we need the most affordable housing within our community. I think most people recognize that. The other thing I would add to is we are working closely with the governor, state legislature, city and county of Honolulu to really tackle this problem, not just ourselves, many other developers in the community. Because everybody recognizes this is a huge issue and a crisis for all of our communities in Oahu. So I think in the in the in the coming years, you're going to see a lot more projects like this, and we are working on many more because this is really. It's our passion, frankly, because, you know, we're not just building units. I mean, this really changes lives for generations to come, because there's about every five years, the renters roll over and you get a new one coming in. And if you think about that over the life of a sixty-year period, it really makes a huge difference.
Want me to wait with somebody else's? Because I got to get up a more.
Chair, one point of clarification, the letter here says that in the second paragraph, this is the two are so affordable and marketable option. Is that still part of that project?
Yes. So what we've done is, and we're actually the first project that's done this. There's under the two one H program, this entitlement program, you have two options. You can either do the rental program or you can do the for-sale. We are the first ones to move forward to entitle it for both. And the reason is because the financing, as I mentioned earlier, is somewhat, it's limited in how much you can get every year. So we go in and we submit for this, and it's a competitive process. There's usually like seven to ten projects a year get selected. And there are several projects that don't get selected, that are all viable, and they would be great projects, but there's just not enough funding for them. So we have made the commitment that we are going to submit twice for this rental program, because that's what we do and that's what we want to do. If we're unable to get it after the second time, we still want to be able to develop a project here. That's when we have the ability to pivot and do the for-sale. When we do the for-sale, sixty percent of the units are affordable and forty percent are at market. And they're really workforce housing units at market. What those forty percent do is they help finance the sixty percent because we're not getting a government money. And so that's really where that comes in. Only in the event if we do not receive that light tech financing through HHFDC after we've submitted twice, and that's over. You can only submit in February. So if we don't get it, we wait till the next February. If we don't get it, it's been almost two years. The other thing it allows us to is because we know we have an execution to the project, we can start spending money on our plans for the rental sooner. Because we know that, hey, even if it doesn't work out, we're going to be able to execute this at the end.
Okay, so you guys are going in. So it's not a variance that would. The variance would kill the project.
Right. If we did not get it, correct.
Kill the project. But moving forward, you guys have two options to report. And you know, who makes that decision? Who makes that determination?
HHFDC, which is the Hawaii Housing Finance.
Denise Sterling?
Yes, Denise, she is, yeah.
Okay. And so if they make the determination, yes, you can go rental, then it's going to be a hundred percent.
Well, if they make the determination, we want to do rental. We're going to do rental. If they make the determination, here's your allocation. Here's your funding. You guys won an award. We are off and running and doing rentals. Yes.
And then if not.
And then if not, we're going to come back. We're going to wait a year. We're going to come back again in the following February and try it again. And if we don't get it at that point, that's when we say, okay, let's switch and do for-sale. We're still doing many other projects like this across the islands. But one of the things we look at, it's almost like a stool, three-legged stool. We look at, we need sixty percent AMI and below. We really need eighty to a hundred percent AMI as well, sort of that missing middle. And then we also need for-sale, because we want people to be able to work their way up, save money when they're in these units at sixty percent, move to the next one, save for a down payment, and then buy a home. All of that. It's very, very.
My last question, sorry, is if you if you don't. Sorry, if. If it goes on the market for sale. Does HS, HHFDC still monitor like that? Are they still a monitoring agency?
Saw that article in the paper, yeah. They do. They're restricted for ten years. There's a buyback provision. Now, and there was an article in the paper saying that, hey, they haven't bought any back. They haven't had the money. Which is true, and they're looking at bringing in partners to do that. In addition, though, and the article didn't talk about it, there's a shared equity component. So it's not like even if they turn around and sell it, all that money goes to that money, money. If there's a lot of equity that's land, a portion of that goes back to HHFDC.
Okay. It's the city that we have to keep accountable for the density of the project, right? And it's a state that we have to be accountable for the regulating of the affordability of this.
Yes, yeah.
When there's a. There's something different.
Hopefully.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, I have several things. So he said it's twenty-one floors high plus the parking.
Yeah, we're nineteen floors high and our parking. I believe we're seven floors.
And with that excess space, you're going to go, what, above thirty? Are you going to go up forty?
Forty.
Just two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, just two hundred and fifty feet. That I'm sorry, that is inclusive of the residential. It's both total.
Total. Yeah, because I have a thing that I'm totally seeing all this huge high-rise popping up all over town. So I'm going to bring up a point to later on, or the city council, or the city government guys, about why they're letting all this high-rise thing explode out of nowhere. But that's not the guys. The other thing I had.
I would just say it's not on us on this particular one, because there's a lot of high-rises, but it has to, there should be some context to the community, but yeah, obviously, I'm a little bit biased as a developer, but we have such a housing crisis here, right? And we all think about our kids and where are they going to live? I do think, you know, it's important that that we respect, you know, Malcolm Mackay views and and the communities that we're developing in. But at the same time, density really helps, is going to help us solve this. And there's a balance, to be sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm more old-school kind of thing as well, you know, on environmental.
I understand.
I I cannot see. But anyway, that's something else. Yeah, the second person I was wondering on is, okay, that's in our era we're living, we're having a lot of Section, I mean, Section Eight people moving in. Is that the kind of people that?
No, this is not Section Eight voucher housing. But we can, I'm going to let Mo, he knows more about this.
There's different types of affordable housing projects. There is project-based Section Eight, which is a whole different type. This is workforce housing, low-income housing tax credits. We do not have Project Eight, a section, Project Section Eight-based setup here. Now, the County City does issue what's called mobile vouchers. You can take it and go anywhere, not in a light tech, any apartment. And by fair housing, you cannot discriminate. So if a Section Eight voucher holder walks in through the door and we have a vacancy, we would be discriminating if we say no. However, the entire financial structure that we apply for for the low-income housing tax credit program under HHFDC allows us to provide these affordable rents without any ongoing operating or rental subsidy from the federal, county, city, or anyone for the life of the development. That capital stack of tax-exempt bonds, federal credits, state credits, provides all the financing needed. So the only debt that is on the property is what can be supported by the restricted rents after we pay all our expenses, which, by the way, there's no such thing as affordable expenses. You got to pay the manager, you got to pay maintenance, you got to pay electricity, insurance, which goes up faster than rents, by the way. However, this unique structure that everybody applies for, and it's the best affordable housing program in the nation. It's produced quality affordable housing better than any other public housing program anyone we've ever seen in decades. But it allows for that financial feasibility. So a hundred and eighty-nine, so we can leave one for the manager. Families can live here and pay the rent, and the project is financially and independently feasible without a single Section Eight voucher. But we are not able to discriminate against a family that walks in with it.
What we prepared, you have additional questions?
I do, but this area now that I'm going to talk about is very, very foreign to me. You're going to have more, be able to say into this than I could probably ever do. Do any of these units, are any of these units going to be set aside to try to help get Hawaiian, native Hawaiian people off of the house list? So that you can't, can it?
I'm going to ask, Madam, federal law prohibits, you know, we have fair housing laws that we have to adhere to. I kind of said that. We are, we have, you know, we have, we've worked with the Taika while he was on the council for many years, and we're we're having discussions as well there. There's. And also, you know, we're working with Kamai Ma schools on a project in Waipahu now, and we're talking about some others elsewhere. So we're definitely sensitive and acute to the, you know, the huge issue, the huge challenge that we have there. And but unfortunately, no, we can't. So and I'm.
Let me, let me. Take a, take a second. So on on understanding the issues that you raise. First of all, the way this is set up as family housing, because we don't have any Section Eight-based. They have to have credits, as in good credit. They have to have their own source of income. So while I can't say native Hawaiian, I can say Hawaiian resident. How? We're asked as follows, particularly in the family. In the family, I have to have somebody come and apply and show us a viable source of income that does not exceed the limit. But we also have a minimum so they can afford the rent. In order to show us a source of income, a ten ninety-nine or a W four right from Kansas is not going to work, because that means you don't have a job. If you're going to come and move here, you're going to leave that job. You're immediately disqualified. So by default, without creating any discrimination, in order to meet the compliance requirements of your income and your employment verification, you're at least a Hawaii resident. That's that's from that aspect. The other thing that we've learned, and we continue to find it across every project we do, we completed a community in Kapala. Somebody asked me today, you know, do you advertise? Do you put? We don't own a for-rent sign in an entire thirty years of history. We don't get put for rent. It's the community. They see it. But what we've seen, without exception, that over the majority are from the direct area. So we did a recent survey in the Kapala community. We finished the Ohana, the Ohana one. And sixty-five, close to seventy percent were from Kapala Eba area. And the others were like from Waipahu and that area there. So they really come from within that area. And that is what is remarkable. We've seen that across the nation everywhere. It's really from the community, for the community. It's people who are living there, people doubled up in homes, tripled up in homes, quadrupled up in homes, playing Tetris, parking the cars in front of their homes so they don't block the other driveway. This is who this is for. So I hope that answers the question. We wish we can do it in many other ways, but really, that's kind of the family housing and where it's directed.
It's too bad because, you know, the plight of the homeless in the Hawaiian community. Something like this, to me, it should have a section that's set aside to help relieve that pressure. I mean, they just got six hundred million dollars. I'm sure they could back a bond or something that would say, hey.
Check in just for a second.
Yes.
You're you're correct. I don't think this particular project is that project. But I'm confident, like I shared with Watson. Rep. I U, that DHHL, Department of Fine Homeland is a viable option to really look at solving some of the the needs of and affordable housing needs for Hawaii. But I don't think this is a project, but I have no doubt, and I'm confident, the native Hawaiians will be living in those places, even without the.
Absolutely.
The entitlement area. So, yeah, I look forward to more.
Absolutely. And we look, we, we, as a development community, not just us, it takes a village of of everybody who's working in this community. We're working closely with the county and city and members like Councilman, Councilwoman Cordero. And others are really asking us questions and challenging us on what we can do. In in developing these communities and talking about HHFDC and oversubscription, it's not that Denise, man, by the way, I have nothing but but compliments to say about HHFDC staff, Denise, and their commitment to do it. They have a cap that comes from the federal government. It's based on population. Bless the city and the county, they're putting gap funds to help promote that. But the nuances of this program, once the bonds run out that are available for the state each and every year, they can stop, they stop allocating. They can't issue any. So it's not that they deny the allocation. They say, okay, what is the most cost-efficient unit by ask? And they stop, number one, two, three. And then when the money runs out, all of these are good projects, but they run out of money.
I think I have one more question. I know you'll get one more, and then I'm done.
Okay.
Why don't you do it? Because you mentioned Kamai Ma schools. Would it matter if this was built on Kamai Ma property? Or is it just because that's the way the housing is?
One more, I'll get you. One more.
Affordable housing, and I'm sure you guys are proud of that in the Kalili Kapalama quadrant right now. Right? So there's, there's, there's a development that Kalina Schools is doing. But they're very different agencies. Department of Fine Homeland deals with a particular beneficiary base, Kalina Schools. Deals with affordability, but sometimes just builds the trust to 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 for the education. So they have different, they have different missions, and they operate in different spaces. And I'm sure, actually, you guys will probably be working with them in the many, whether it's Porridge or Waipahu, like you said, or Kapalama, right, which is all the spaces that Kalina Schools is developing now. And Department of Fine Homeland will probably soon, with the six hundred million dollars, start to effectuate their plan, hopefully. In the next coming two years, because they got a, they got a time stamp.
Mr. Big Family questions will make ourselves there today and any day. But the answer is correct. DHHL, DHHL has lands, and when they put the lands out, the RFU, RFV process, there is an allocation that is required for native Hawaiian. That is something they have, our nonprofit knows better about it, so that they don't run, you don't run risk funding right of federal fair discrimination.
Right.
So your your answer is DHHL. If I'm standing here and seeing DHHL lands, questions are applicable. Otherwise, Fair Housing Act.
What they can also do, just for your, as you guys probably know this, is they can make any land.
I know.
They can. They can. Yes, they can.
That's something you guys can work on. That's why I was encouraging.
I'll just be there when they call me, but they can.
Then they can, they can issue their own, they can do their own heights and.
They can say, yeah, this is now DHHL lands. You're just a part of the empty ones. Thank you.
I do have a question from a member that we would indulge a community member, Eddie. Eddie, you can go ahead and ask your question.
Hi, good evening. I actually live on Ala Napa Place, and I've lived here for over twelve years. I work near the airport, so every day I go past that vacant lot that you're going to develop. And every day I pass it, I I tell myself. And every day I pass it, I, I tell myself, what a waste of land. Why doesn't somebody develop it? And I'm overjoyed to hear that, um, your agency is building that. And it's a small piece of property, the footprint is really small. And for you to build a hundred and ninety units, that's remarkable. And to have more parking than the units are available, that's a premium, uh, anywhere on this island. So I'd like to applaud you guys, um, for moving forward with this project. Um, if I was a councilman, I'd approve it. And, and the only other thing I have, I know one of the board members has a view that, um, uh, high rises, uh, block people's views. I used to live in Makiki, and I had a fantastic view of the ocean. But as I got older and matured, I changed my stance and uh, land is at a finite amount. And that's why the homes are a million dollars today, because you can't make more land. So the solution is what you guys are doing is, is to go up. And that's what most major cities are doing. To house their residences, you have to go up. There's no other choice, otherwise we leave this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Appreciate those comments. Uh, if I, if the board, uh, if I could get a motion to approve the, the letter uh, with, uh, any substantive and non, uh, non-substantive and grammatical changes that may be made in the letter in the case that, uh, um, you do, I, I already see one, I apologize, that's Council Chair Waters, not Water. So if there's any voting.
I move to approve the letter, uh, with add-ons to grammatical errors.
Is there any, uh, any discussion, members? We did a lot of discussion earlier. Uh, is, uh, if there's no discussion or who, but are there any members, uh, voting in the negative? Hearing no opposition, the motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you, members.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We'll send this, uh, letter to Council Chair Waters, uh, make sure that they have the community's stance on your project. And we look forward to being a part of the council meeting that says, from our concept, when, when, to the restroom. Say, hey, my community supports that project.
Thank you. We'll definitely be back and keep you updated on our progress as well.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
All right. Thank you, board. Uh, we had a lot of great discussion this evening uh, over, uh, ready on this project that's gonna affect our community. We'll move on to city elected government officials, uh, City Mayor Rick Blangiardi, just present it is. Uh, Ryan Gallagher.
Good evening, board, uh, community members. The city and county of Honolulu would like to, uh, present the following information. Um, in October of twenty twenty-two, the city and county of Honolulu finalized the purchase of the Waikiki Vista Building located in Moiliili. This acquisition will add over one hundred affordable housing units to the city's inventory and potentially also serve as a temporary home for city government during the renovations of Honolulu Halli. Uh, in the coming year, the city will look to rehabilitate and renovate the residential portion of the building through a development agreement with an affordable housing developer, who then rent and manage the building to eligible individuals earning at or below the sixty percent of the area median income. Uh, please look for more details available in around, uh, early twenty twenty-three. The next couple of months. The city and county of Honolulu is now accepting applications for up to thirty million dollars in relief for nonprofit organizations that have been adversely impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Eligible nonprofits could receive up to a hundred thousand dollars for help, uh, to, to help them recover. Funds awarded through this process may be used as working capital to cover day-to-day operating expenses such as rent, lease payments, mortgage payments, uh, asset maintenance, utility expenses, payroll, uh, PPE, uh, worked within, uh, your organization. Uh, you need to be an eligible five oh one C three nonprofit, um, and you need to have existed prior to the onset of the pandemic. Yeah, and you must, uh, primarily provide direct assistance and services to Oahu residents. Uh, the nonprofit must also demonstrate the need for economic support resulting from financial hardship caused by declines in revenues, such as those of loss of donations or funding revenue due to COVID nineteen. Uh, if you think your nonprofit may qualify for these relief funds, please visit oneohahu.org, nonprofit relief program, learn more. November twenty, uh, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, uh, Mayor Blangiardi and city leaders and partners of the, uh, Chana Town Community held a blessing and lay draping ceremony to mark the completion of the renovations of the Dr. Sanyat Sen Memorial Park. Uh, if you get a chance, uh, please go check it out. They, they did a pretty good job. The city and county of Honolulu will be participating in the January twenty-fifth career fair at the Blaisdell. There'll be various city and county, um, departments and agencies there. And you can also, uh, please check out governmentjobs.com. Personnel updates within the city and county of Honolulu. Hakumilis was named, uh, director designate of the city's Department of Design and Construction. Don Takuchia Apuna was named director designate of the city's Department of Planning and Permitting. Uh, and Jiro Sumada was named, uh, was appointed deputy director of the city's Department of Planning and Permitting. We also like to announce, uh, Craig Hori joined the city as the new chief of affordable housing policy and strategy with the Department of Planning and Permitting. Um, for more information on that, in a kind of a recap, you can, uh, look for, um, oneohahu.org. It's when, uh, it's within the newsletter. For the second year in a row, Forbes has distinguished the city and county of Honolulu among America's best employers by state ranking, uh, the number two employer and, um, and in Hawaii and number one in the state for government services. Uh, we'd also like to announce the, um, the neighborhood, Neighborhood Commission Office, uh, Board of Elections application is now available online at, um, webone.hnl.info.nb or slash nbe. Um, so some important dates to, uh, to take note of on Friday, February seventeenth, uh, twenty twenty-three, there'll be a candidate filing deadline. Friday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, the voting begins, and Friday, May nineteenth, voting ends. Anyone can vote, including military and legal aliens, must be at least eighteen, uh, by Friday, February seventeenth. And voted in the last general election or register with the NCO to vote specifically for the neighborhood board elections. See, I believe there was a question at the last board, uh, meeting on, uh, affordable housing plan. What is the administration's affordable housing plan? And I believe a resident inquired into whether the administration has presented the city council with their plan. Did you want me to give a recap on that?
Could you provide that in writing so we could give that to the resident and ask the question?
Yes, yes, we, we will provide that in writing.
Send that to Thomas, and Thomas will, uh, have it available to myself, and we can give, I don't believe the resident is joining here.
Okay, that sounds good. We can do that.
Thank you. Um, members, uh, welcome to our board, Deputy Director Gallagher. Um, uh, we definitely enjoy having a member of the DDC, um, come to our board um, as the director of cost law before. Uh, and that is because the Salt Lake Winding Project is a project that is near and dear to our hearts. Uh, and a project that we'd like to see get done in full in their lifetime. There's, uh, any other questions from the board? I'd like to open up to the board. Whoever there.
Uh, back about a month ago, I contacted the mayor's office and asked for the rules and regulations about bicycle lanes. And the rules and regulations that those people that ride those bikes have to adhere to. Um, and I also referred to motorized scooters, bicycles, and anything else. I know mopeds are not allowed in the bicycle lane, but it seems like everything else that's motorized is in there. The reason I brought that up is I almost hit a guy on a bicycle, and he was probably doing at least thirty miles an hour. And when I looked, there was nobody there, and then all of a sudden there was somebody there. So I think we have to start looking at these rules and regulations for these different types of vehicles that are trying to share the road with the cars now before someone gets run over. In fact, someone may have gotten run over already. I just don't know about it. But it's very hard for, when you're driving a car to look, and you don't see anybody, and then you go to make your turn, and all of a sudden someone's there, because they come from behind you. That might be something we look into, is maybe they should travel in a certain direction, which bicycles used to have to do a long time ago. But when they come from behind you, you can't see them. I mean, I've seen guys on bicycles trying to beep the yellow light like a car does through the intersection and almost get ran over. In fact, I talked with a kid the other day that did exactly that. If that hadn't been for the guy in the car hitting his brakes, he probably would have killed him. And the kid just, he just skateboarded the way he went. You gotta get some rules and regulations as far as how all this is gonna intermingle with vehicles. And I think we better do it now before we're twenty years down the road, and everybody's doing damn well what they want to. Uh, there's just not enough rules and regulation. The enforcement part of it, that's gonna be very hard, because it happens so quick, and they're gone. I mean, you're on a bicycle, you're going one way, all of a sudden you're going the other, and the guy gets hit by a car, and it's gonna be the driver's fault of the car. You know, we've gotta get some rules and regulations in here before this gets any farther. So I would like to have the rules and regulations, if you can send them to Chase or somehow, because I don't have a computer, so you can't send it to me now, but.
You can work on getting that to us.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Uh, any other questions? I, I do wanna remind members, we've got, uh, thirteen minutes left in our agenda. I wanna be respectful of your time, but also expect, uh, everyone that joined us this evening, it might go a little over. Also, we can keep our comments, uh, brief in this portion of our, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yeah, uh, I've had comments, I just, my sister handles the finances for our apartment and stuff, but also other neighbors have been talking to me as well as some of the senior guys at, uh, the Mokapu's gang. So I checked up into this, and we're wondering, what about these property taxes? Are, like, we, especially people that live in the condos, the, the property taxes have jumped like twenty percent plus. And, uh, there are a lot of seniors that are living in the condo. And it's, you know, like, on fixed incomes and stuff, and what's happening? I mean, the first pay, like, usually you either pay one payment or you pay it in two payments. So if we're paying in two payments, as most of us do, the first payment is due in February. And again, too, like, it's like twenty percent over, and I look, we have, uh, the real estate things, the values and stuff, and I mean, it's been like, I, a lot of it might be because of the inflation and stuff, you know, that we had last year, but still the cost, it affects us guys, it's affecting us guys, and I'm sure if it's affecting me, it's affecting a lot of other people that live in Salt Lake. So I was wondering, what's, what's going on with these property taxes, and is there something that can help us?
Deputy Director, uh, do you think that, uh, you could, uh, I, I know you probably don't have an answer now, um, as you're not part of the, uh, your property tax office, but if you could maybe, um, help us at our next meeting, uh, get an answer to Vice Chair. As far as the recent, like, when did that, I guess, bill pass into them?
Yes, yeah, we, we can follow up with that. Um, and it's, it's not just a condo, um, owners. Um, I, as a, as a homeowner, notice that last year we had a twenty percent increase and a pretty significant increase this year, too. But yeah, we'll, we'll follow up with that. Get your response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, uh, Deputy Director. You guys have a great evening. Thank you for being with us, and we look forward to future meetings with you. Uh, we'd like to call, we'd like to call up city elected government official, city council member, uh, Radiant Quirino.
Good evening, Chair, Neighborhood Board members, neighbors. Happy to be here. Uh, first off, I, well, before I go to my report, I do wanna address a few things. First off, um, for working together for, to support our, uh, neighbors who, um, need housing, need mental health support and more, uh, know that, uh, we do not only intend to work together with the new administration, but also, uh, currently do know that, um, the different agencies do operate on different schedules, so trying to work that out. Um, and with the Department of Transportation, for the State Department of Transportation, the office, I mean, the director used to be with the city's Office of Housing, uh, back in the day. So knows very well the different organizations, as well as a different, um, you know, we talked about protocols that, that, that we need to go through. Uh, so, um, hopefully we will be able to work carefully with the new director, um, of that agency. But also there's different, um, agencies at the state level that we need to work with. It's not just the State Department of Transportation, it's not just one agency, um, where we can, uh, line up schedules. Next up, I was gonna address something else, uh, but, uh, I wanna address the real property tax, um, valuations increasing, uh, twenty percent. Um, in the last two years, on, on my first two years, there have been, uh, numerous bills where we wanna be able to cap or increase the, um, uh, them, the, for, not just for Kupuna, but also for, uh, people that are in homeowner exemptions or also low income. So currently it's at fifty or sixty, or up to sixty percent AMI. Um, there are bills before the council that have been held up in the council almost two years, uh, to increase that to sixty or seventy or even higher, so that, uh, once again, that will be a cap where, you know, if you, um, see like a twenty percent increase, and you are at that lower AMI, you'll be able to, uh, get support. We also have bills that have been held up for two years to support our Kupuna, uh, regarding real property, um, taxes and payments and whatnot. Um, I would like to let you know that I have a new role in the council as budget chair, and I intend to hear those bills. So, um, I, we wanna be able to support our residents. Thank you. Yeah, um, I cannot speak for the former budget chair, so by, we did not hear those bills. Um, but there are a lot. Um, I know that the city administration has seen that, um, the same amount of appeals in the last amount of years. So what have people, what people have seen is that, um, people have not actually applied for homeowner exemption. And I have to say, my, my parents themselves, too, they never know that they didn't file for homeowner exemption. They were paying however much, we saw the median income be, um, go at one million dollars and above, and then went into a new real property classification. So, um, we would also like to, uh, increase the, um, I, not, not, uh, awareness that people need to do that as well, uh, because people, people don't. So, uh, my colleague, Vice Chair, Esther Kia, I know, actually also has a requesting for a, a huge, I wanna say campaign, uh, so that people will know about this. Um, another colleague of mine, uh, council member Toba, went out on his community to let people know, eh, this is what you have to do, uh, so that you won't be hit even harder when, when these valuations do go up. And maybe as a board and as neighbors together, that is something that we could let people know, because people are buying new, um, either condos or homes and whatnot, and just maybe may not have known. Uh, with that, I did touch it on, um, that I do have a new, uh, committee. Uh, but on my report, um, I just wanna let you know, we, I got new colleagues, um, three new colleagues, uh, Councilmember Dos Santos, Councilmember Okimoto, and Councilmember Wire. And I have a new leadership, um, with the council that's on my report. I don't really wanna go into that. But I just wanna be here for questions, whether I can take it now or come back to you next week, or next week. Or I, I guess we can talk next week, but you know, next month, you know, yeah, so, um, yeah. Oh wait, I do wanna say, because I, I made this specifically, uh, Board Member Hind, blessed the council. Oh, yes, I know. I took videos, I, I was, I wish. Yes, I know, I took videos, I wish I could put a video on my paper here. But maybe if you want, I can, I can email it, I can email it to everybody, the video. So I wanna thank you, Board Member Hind, it was truly a blessing, thank you for being there.
We have a star on our slide.
Oh, yes.
Our very own Board Member Hind. Thank you so much, Councilmember, for your continued support. We look forward to working with you in your new role of council.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on to our state government elected officials, State Governor, Senator David, Representative, that's four years. I don't believe we have one yet. Wait till they get approved. Moving on to State Senator Glen Wukai, Senator Wukai, we have the floor. Mahalo for joining us.
Thanks for having us, having me. Happy New Year, everyone. About a month ago, we had a very lively town hall meeting on Red Hill. It was held at Wanalo Middle School, and it had its very heated moments. There were a lot of folks that were angry with the Navy for what they did and what they're not doing in terms of being transparent and clear on defueling and the fire suppression system that went bad. And so a lot of people expressed their frustration with the Navy. The Navy at the town hall assured the public that they would be better at sharing information and being more transparent. And to their credit, they're gonna have another town hall meeting next week, Wednesday, as well as Thursday. So if you missed last month's town hall, you have more than ample opportunity to express your sentiments to the Navy. We, earlier today, saw our new representative, Michael IU, and because of redistricting, Representative Ichiyama now has a lot of Navy housing. So both of them are my new colleagues in pushing for Radford High School. So we organized a little tour, as well as meeting with the Radford administration, as well as staff, as well as teachers there, to get an understanding of Radford High School's needs, looked at some of their successes and a lot of their challenges ahead. So looking forward, I certainly miss Representative Johansson, but welcome the new representatives, now have two of them, to help me push for more funding, more resources, and just more, more for Radford High School. And we're, should all be proud, our little Kiki at Salt Lake Elementary are good stewards of the Aina. They are promoting trees, and they also are very good artists. Three of them won a statewide, excuse me, island-wide art contest for the promotion of trees. And of course, next week, Wednesday, we start our legislative session. I am now the Chairman of Public Safety and Military, so I will be pretty much taking care of prisons and making sure that people are not ripping you off and hurting all of you, as well as making sure that the Navy does what it needs to do, as well as other military issues in our state. So that's my new wheelhouse, and would be happy to hear anybody's comments about what we should be doing this legislative session. Thanks, Chase.
Thank you so much, Senator. Is there any questions or comments from the board? I do see Board Member Fine, actually, not Board Member Fine, excuse me. Board Member IU Chong, with her hand raised. Board Member Chong, IU.
So I did attend that last town hall meeting, and that, I don't think it was very well organized. And I remember you guys stating that you guys were gonna make sure that all, every single question that was asked, that was not given at that meeting, was gonna be answered and posted. Do you have the link for that? Because I would really like to see what was my response to a question I had that was never asked that night. And then the other question to that, connected with that, is, is the next town hall meeting, which is next week, is it gonna be in the same format? And if so, why, when the first town hall meeting didn't go so, so well? Because people did not, they did not have an open mic. Thank you.
Yep, so for the answer to your first question, I believe all of the questions were gathered and responses issued. I'm sorry, I do not have a link, but I will get it to Chase, to hopefully give to all of you board members for that information. So I know the information is out there, I'm just sorry, I don't have at the tip of my fingers where that information is. As to the format of the town hall meeting at Wanalo Middle School, to be honest, if we did open mic, it would have just been a bad show. I mean, there were a lot of angry people there, and you put a microphone in the hands of angry people, things get totally out of control. We wanted to have some level of civility, that's why we asked people to write down their questions instead of just commandeering the entire thing. I mean, we had cops there. I mean, at one point, it got so heated that the cops had to kind of calm people down. So I'm actually happy that we didn't have open mics, because it could have been, it could have been very, very nasty there. As to how the Navy's gonna handle next week's town hall meeting, I'm not too sure. I see someone in uniform in your room there, maybe that gentleman can answer how the format is going to be.
I believe Chuck mentioned, Board Member IU Chong, that the eighteenth will be a town hall setting, and then the nineteenth will be an open house.
Yeah, that's correct. And again, it's the Environmental Protection Agency that's managing those meetings with Navy representation.
So PPA will be managing the meeting. So we did get ourselves a new PPA contact that will be joining our board as of, I believe, first meeting this February, and we look forward to that person coming on. Board Member Barry, you have a question?
Yeah, the only thing that I have to add to that is, I watched it on TV, and when someone from the audience would have a question, no one repeated the question because that person didn't have a microphone. They just gave the answer. So you never heard the question, you only heard the answer. So if you're not gonna let them have it in the audience, at least who's gonna give the answer should repeat the question, so we know what they're responding to.
I totally understand, as a viewer, your frustration with how that went out. But, you know, as I was mentioning, the rules of engagement were that people who had questions needed to write them down, and then we had a moderator who read them and then got a response. You're right, Mr. Bear, there were some people who just voiced their concerns and questions straight and directly to the panelists, who occasionally answered the question. So you're right, if in fact, we somehow revisit this kind of format, I will assure you that we will convey to the moderator to repeat the question if it's answered by those on the panel, if it was thrown out by people in the audience. So you're right, it was just, it was chaotic there. Mr. Bear, you would have seen how chaotic it was.
Well, I bet it was. And the other thing, too, is if someone's gonna speak, what's their name and where do they live? You know, because at least we can connect with that person, like, oh, he lives down the street, or he lives on the other side of the island. A few of them, and I, from personal experiences, came from Maui, to a big island. So where do their voices fit in? You know, that's what I would like to hear.
Okay, good suggestions.
Any other questions for the Senator? Thank you so much, Senator, good luck.
Sorry, I had one more thing, real fast. Can, can you please make sure that the next time you guys have any type of board meeting or any type of meeting, that if you guys have your presenters situated on a stage at a different level from the rest of the crowd, that they're dressed properly? The female that was on that panel shouldn't have been wearing what she was wearing, or she should have had some type of sheet covering all of her leg. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I don't know how I'm gonna address that, but I will convey that sentiment to the Navy personnel. I know what you're speaking of, that the dress was a little bit revealing when she stepped out, but good suggestion.
Thank you, thank you, Senator. I appreciate you being here this evening, and good luck in, in session.
Great, thanks, Chase, aloha.
I'd like to follow up, State House Representative Linda Ichiyama.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, hi, my name is Marge Louis. I'm the Legislative Aid for Representative Ichiyama. She couldn't be here tonight. We had asked, I don't know if I'm on screen, but the, the representative sent a little, little sheet, information sheet, and they asked the board to hand it out. But let me read, can I read her statement to the constituents?
Yeah, go ahead, Ruth.
Okay, she says, "Aloha, neighbors, Happy New Year. The start of the new legislative session comes with many challenges for our state. Affordable housing, mental health, renewable energy, climate change, safe communities, and cost of living are all issues we, we will work on this session." She said she'll be serving as the Chair of the House Water and Land Committee, and she'll also be a member of the Corrections, Military, and Veterans Committee, and a member of the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committees. So she says, if she can be of help to anybody, you can call her at her office. The number is five eight six six two two zero, or you could email her. It's repichiyama, all one word, at capital.hawaii.gov. And so I am representing her tonight, and if you have some questions that you would like me to take back to her, I can try and take them down. I would need your name and your full name, so that I could take it back, and she'll know who was asking the questions, and then we could try and get in touch with you. So are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Louis, for joining us to see. Any questions for Representative Linda Ichiyama? Questions in the audience? Thank you so much, Ms. Louis.
Okay, so. All right, so one last thing, can I just give you the telephone number? It's five eight six six two two zero, so you could call us at any time, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to our item number seven, a federal elected government official's Congress. I don't believe they are joining us this quarter, and we'll see them in a few months.
Is it possible to send some kind of communication where, you know, like, originally, you started like once every six months or so, you know, and you maybe send someone, a representative or something online, you know, so, because right now, it seems like no sense have his name on, on this schedule, but.
When they show up. Then we can have a meeting. Well, when they show up and they're not under government, and we don't have a forum, which we, we would be rather lucky, but I just am afraid of that is the case, and we wouldn't be able to see them. Okay. Let's, go ahead, Mr. Chimi. On which item are you commenting on?
Ed Case. I attended the IA Neighborhood Board meeting just the other day, and Congressman Case had a representative at that meeting. I did pose a question to the Rep., referencing his newsletter, which stated they appropriated or approved approximately, I forget the exact number, a billion dollars to the Red Hill problem. The question I asked was, is there any accounting for that money as far as understanding? And I think it goes back to Vice Chair Joe's omura question on the money. How is that money appropriated? How is it being used? And is there any accounting or auditing of expenses for accountability? And the representative at that time did not know the answer. Of course, you know, he had to get back to me, but I just wanted to bring that to this board's attention.
I think I was mentioning earlier, the meaning of Chuck, you're gonna be follows up on that?
See what kind of breakdown we can get right now into the chair.
Thank you, Chuck, I appreciate that.
Also, to go back, what Joe was talking about, I invited Nestor Garcia, who is Ed Case's rep, to come to our meeting, and he did not show up. I called him since then, I've talked to him, apologized for not being here, that he would try to make this meeting, but he didn't show up again. Also, he never called you. I gave him the Army's number, and he's supposed to contact them about the helicopters. And he was supposed to bring that to tonight's meeting. I will call him again, because now I have a feeling, I kind of feel like we're being just blown off. You know, that's twice now that he said he'd never came. So I will, I will call him, I will call him, and I'll try to convince him to come to the next meeting, but I don't know what, do we have a lot on next meeting?
Do we have?
I mean, do we have a lot on agenda?
We can, like, we can pivot on the agenda. And is there a specific item that you wanna take up, helicopters in next?
Well, the helicopters, both the private and the military side, because it's two entities.
Clearly, Thomas, tonight, when I came up to this meeting, they were kind of flying low, heading towards a possibility.
Yeah, well, Chase had some flywheels out there at eight hundred feet. I've had some that come over my house and all my place, and everything in the house just rattles because of the air concussion. But then also, there's the private helicopters, there's, like, every day over my house, Radford High School, we get sixteen helicopters flying over.
At midnight. Twelve thirty in the morning, Wapu Lele is doing training over my house.
And they come over your house after they come to my house, or before they come to my house, so. It's ridiculous.
I'm definitely adding to. I'm adding to next month's agenda, so we can discuss the aircraft.
But I think what we have to look at, is I think we have to go and start, not Ed Case's office, but FAA, because they're the ones that are given the permission for the private helicopters to fly in direction. Also, we now have planes flying over our heads that are landing at Barber's Point, and they're FedEx, UPS planes, and as they fly over our house, they're downgrading and opening the doors. There's a lot of noise that comes from those planes, so then I think we should put that on next one's agenda.
I'll go ahead and add that to the agenda for next one, and then I'll try to invite the FAA local contact.
Yeah, I've got it, yeah.
Now we'll move into our community updates, Aloha Stadium Authority, Department of Kind and General Services. I do apologize, our updates for this section are running a little behind schedule, a lot of behind schedule. Thank you so much, Chris. Ryan, if you're still with us?
No worries, aloha, Chair Shigamasa, and members of the board, along with members of the community. Happy New Year. Since we last met back in November, we have actually experienced one hundred and eighty degree turnaround on our project. And one of the things we like to do is share the birth of our newsletter, or rebirth of our newsletter that we have restructured. And if I can share screen, I'll just quickly take you through this. And if you are not currently receiving our newsletter, again, just put your email address in the chat, and we'd be happy to add you to our email blast. But on December nineteenth, we introduced our new formatted, new Aloha Stadium Community Newsletter. It is not just a nascent project newsletter, it's a newsletter for all of you, and we want to share that with you. We have a format where we'll share whatever latest renderings we have or project developments. And in this case, we're giving you a view from the Lower Halaba parking lot area that shows how we're mixing residential with green space and community gathering spaces to bring much more texture and value to the community. We'll also have featured guest areas, and this month, we featured Governor Green as he took office and has strongly supported the perspective that we've been working on, because he very much embraces that the stadium needs to be a multi-purpose athletic event, an entertainment venue, so that you can use the venue for three hundred and sixty-five days a year in all kinds of community events. Also, very much emphatic about developing the surrounding district, because he's looking at housing. He's also looking at being able to reconnect and revitalize the community as well. So what you'll find in our electronic newsletter is that you'll be able to click on links. to read more details about the articles, you'll even get links to any types of videos or special feed. So a quick one-stop shop to get up to date with our guest speakers. We give our project updates and where we stand, and this little update, we're sharing that we have been given the direction by Governor Green to move forward as quickly as possible with both the stadium and the district development. We also would be sharing frequently asked questions, and in a bit I'll share a graphic, because last, at the end of the year, we were getting questions on the funds expenditure for our project, and we'll get into that. We also want to feature an area for you to know about Aloha Stadium events and activities. So a quick way to find information, and last month the big feature was the Holiday Light Event. We'll be having new events for this January, because we'll be sharing our newsletter every month now. And we will provide quick links, we'll have feature columns, feature corners. We also want to start getting into more information on your community events and interesting articles that you'd like to see. So stay tuned, we'll be reaching out to you more. We'd like to include more speakers, including people like your Chair Shigamasa, that given him a little form to share his perspectives. The other item that I just wanted to share tonight was in response to a question from the IA Neighborhood Board, and that had to do with a question on how much money has been spent on our project to date? Or, and where was that money spent? So what we have is a quick graphic for all of you to look at, and let me change it to full screen mode. So basically, as of December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, we have spent twenty-five point seven million dollars on our overall efforts, but that began with advanced planning from as early as two thousand and eighteen. So starting with the smallest wedge, we had roughly four percent of the money, which is just under a million dollars, spent on ongoing structural monitoring. We do continue to monitor the structure, but more importantly, we did it from two thousand and seventeen. And as you know, we finally had to get to a point where we could no longer maintain the stadium to the point where we could use all of the stands because of the extent of the structural damage from corrosion. We spent about three percent of our dollars on site selection, that was just under a million dollars as well. And we spent four point eight million dollars, or nineteen percent of our funding, on developing a master plan, which we still do continue to develop as we start to evolve and as we work more closely with you in what you want to see and how we can fit everything in. And of course, on the environmental impact statement. The biggest chunk of our funding, roughly nineteen million dollars, or seventy-four percent of our funding, has been spent on developing the procurement for this project for both the stadium and the real estate. That has been very involved, that's where a lot of our research has gone into, both for analysis and projections, getting into the conditions of the site and the environment and all of our outreach. Certainly, the delay over two years expanded the expense, as we had to adjust to COVID-nineteen and the changing economic conditions, so that continues. The question was raised back in November, if we were to change direction on the procurement, as was being implied at the time, how much of that money would have been lost? We determined we could probably have saved maybe thirty percent of that work product, or about six million dollars of it. The rest of it, thirteen million dollars, would not be reutilized, and that would still be the risk if we were to change direction at the time. That was the end of that update, we'll be including that in our FAQs on site. On a happier note, I'm going to pass the microphone to Stadium Manager Ryan Andrews to give you the latest on what's happening at the stadium, and then we'll open up for questions, right?
Thank you, Chris, and good evening, Chair, Board members, Happy New Year to you all. The stadium did finish the year on a very busy note, as Chris hinted. We had twenty-four nights of the light show that ended on December thirtieth. I do want to share, and I'm sure many of you know, we did have some challenges early on with noise in the community, and I am sorry for that, and thank you for your patience as we addressed it. The licensee made a number of adjustments with their event, and we got them to comply with the noise ordinance. I know from, I just want to share with you, from an operational standpoint, sound seems like an easy thing to control, you just turn it down. But I will share with you that the physics of sound travel are very complicated, and every, there's a lot of variables that can change it, from traffic to wind, time of day, and even the halava stream, which we learned carries sound very well. In short, though, all those issues were addressed, and overall it's a very successful event, and we appreciate the community's patience. We do have some upcoming events I want to share. The first is that the Swap Meet will be hosting their annual Chinese New Year Lion Dance on Sunday, January twenty-ninth. And then we have two concert events that are coming to the stadium in our upper lot. The first is on Friday, February tenth, and that is with Gary LaVox from Rascal Flatts. So country music fans will enjoy that. And the second is Saturday, the eleventh, the very next night, and that is with Sogja, which is island reggae. Similar to other concerts that we've hosted in the upper lot, the staging is faced towards the stadium away from the neighborhood, and the concerts have a hard stop at ten P.M. We are expecting between five and eight thousand for each of those nights, people for each of those nights. On February twentieth, we will be hosting once again the Great Aloha Run as we're the finish line. And I know you're all very familiar with that, because they run down Salt Lake Boulevard. And then finally, we are planning an open house, actually, maybe I should call it a closing house event, where the public can come to the stadium, see the memorabilia, there's fifty years of memorabilia there, visit the locker rooms, go on the field, participate in a variety of games. And this is being held because of just, we've had a high volume of requests from people that want to get that one last chance to come in. This is scheduled for Saturday, February twenty-fifth. I will be sharing more details, or the stadium will be sharing more details in about two weeks. And I will come back, obviously, next month to give you the greatest details on how you can participate. So that concludes my report, thank you, Chair, and as Chris said, we're open to entertaining any questions.
Questions or comments on the board?
I had a, I guess, this is a suggestion that two people wanted me to get to you guys for the new stadium. I don't know if it's something you guys would consider, but they're saying that in the old, one of the biggest things a lot of college stadiums have, which we never had in Aloha Stadium, is what they call luxury boxes, and they have somewhere between twenty to fifty of them. And this is, we have billionaires that in the state, and we also have billionaires that come in on season and so forth. And then if you charge them like, you know, they can purchase spot like once a year, and you constantly, it's like a membership kind of thing. And when they come in, they deserve a spot, and then, you know, they get the treatment, you know, steak and lobster, wine, champagne. They go out, watch the football game, you know, it's a contract that you guys may put up with a restaurant, like one of the fine dines and so forth, you know? And especially since the guy told me, you know, if you guys are looking to make a profit rather than just break even, that's one of the things you might want to consider.
Emma Murrow Murai, thank you for that comment, and you are spot on. And I will share with you that that is definitely part of our planning, is to have a variety of seating products, everything from your standard seat to club spaces to luxury suites that have, like you said, the full fine treatment. And in addition to that, it's just the fine food and beverage treatment. So very different than what people are used to here, but what you see in other stadiums around the world. So thank you for that comment.
Chair, one quick comment. Chris, I don't know how you do it, but you always look like nine A.M. and nine P.M., so thank you. Because you always, guys, always come at the end, and you bring, both of you bring so much, and you too, Ryan, you look like nine A.M. too.
I feel like ten P.M.
You guys bring so much energy, you know, to these long meetings, I just wanted to thank you guys for that. And Chris, I don't know how you do it, I don't know how you do it, you look fabulous, though, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the continued partnership, we look forward to seeing you next month. It has been a request by the board that we take up the same resolution as if it were our own, but I need, because I need a very important task. So we'll be adding that to our agenda this month, so we'll be seeing our other.
Mahalo, much appreciated, and I think we saw at the end of the year the immense power, the way that you have as a community voice, embrace that, so thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, thank you so much for coming, you know, this evening. Board of Water Supply, I think we have Michelle Harman joining us.
Yes, good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Michelle Harmon with the Board of Water Supply reports. So we have one main break on December sixth, it's a four-inch main at thirty-eight forty-nine Lekini Street. And then our general water announcement for this month is we invite everybody to come and talk story with us at the January twentieth through twenty-second BIA Home Building and Remodeling Show at the Blaisdell Arena. And we're really excited about our new toilet rebates, and those are residential and commercial toilet rebates. So come on and find out more about those, and for information, you can go to www.biahawaii.org. And that's all I have to report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the Board of Water Supply? Thank you so much, Michelle, for joining us this evening, mahalo.
Thank you, aloha.
Item number nine. One second, Michelle.
Not a question, not a question for Board, no question for Board of Water Supply, but I just wanted to make a quick announcement that Sierra Club of Hawaii has a fundraiser on March twenty-sixth, Walk for Water, and it's related to clean water and supporting, protecting our most valuable resource. Yeah, so I'll try to forward any information, and maybe you guys can post it, if that'll be okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Rail Transit Project Line C, I think we have Harry, are you able to join us again?
Thank you, Chair, good evening, everyone, Harry Cho with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation, here to provide an update on the rail project. First, I'd like to provide a brief update, excuse me, update on the project through the Salt Lake Neighborhood Board District. Our airport guideway and stations contractor is continuing construction of the four stations between Pearl Harbor and the Middle Street Transit Center, and has also been restoring the roads and sidewalks along Comemay Highway and the airport business area near Lagoon Drive. So this segment of the project is progressing well. As for the remaining construction through the last segment of the project, utility relocation work is ongoing through Dillingham, Iberia, Downtown Chinatown, and Kakaako. Next, I'd like to share a flyer with a brief safety message. As Heart and Hitachi Rail Honolulu continues testing the system in preparation of passenger service, we would like to remind the public that there are hazards, and we would like to stress the importance of understanding these hazards, so everyone stays safe. So if I can quickly share my screen, I will briefly go over this flyer. And I'm focusing on this bottom half of the flyer with the header danger and the bullet points under that. First, keep out of the rail operation center, rail stations, and all other facilities, they are still active work sites. Second, do not cut or jump fences to enter any secured areas. Third, keep off of the rail guideway and track. The third rail, which runs along the entire length of the guideway and powers the trains, is adjacent to the track and is energized with seven hundred and fifty volts of electricity at all times, twenty-four hours a day, so any contact with the third rail will be fatal and will result in death. Fourth, the automated trains may move in any direction at any time without warning. And lastly, the system is equipped with over fifteen hundred security cameras. So these are just some reminders that we wanted to share with the public, so everyone understands the dangers with interfering with the rail system and not following the simple directions. Our priority is always public safety, so we would appreciate if everyone can share this information with your family and friends, so that way more and more people can be made aware of these hazards and avoid these unnecessary dangerous situations. I did send a copy of this flyer to Chair and the board, but if anyone else would like a copy, you can reach out to our office at info@HonoluluTransit.org, and I'll be happy to share this with those that reach out as well. But that's all I have to share tonight, but I'm open for any questions.
Harry, just very quickly, going from Nemets to Nemets Highway near the Bay of the, have we got that issue addressed here with the repaving of that road? The large vehicles are exiting out of there and taking the big rocks out of that area to get it onto the road and causing hot holes. But it's really, even there, it's been, it's been like that, I think, since November, we brought it up.
Okay, yeah, I could definitely bring that up with our contractor again. There are some areas that are outside of our contractor's area of responsibility to maintain. Some of it, it's possible, some of it is outside of our jurisdiction and might fall on H dot to repair. But I definitely will check on that again, and if it is within our limits to maintain, we'll be sure to get our contractor on that.
I would, I would remiss to say that you guys are the cause of that road getting like that, so. I mean, there's some, you guys share some responsibility, but if you can, please get us an answer at the next board meeting, please.
Understood.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Any other questions or comments on the board?
Yeah, here, forevermore. Again, I had suggestions from certain parts of the community, because there's been a lot of, you know, public negativity, yeah, about the rail and stuff. So I had several suggestions, and they, from people that are saying, is there a way possible, because you're testing the trains or whatever the buses or whatever, something, you know? And they're going both ways, and if possible, maybe like once a week or something, you know? Allow maybe, you know, have a raffle, some kind of contest or something where you take fifty people, right? And just get them to get on a train and just ride, you know, it's like a, like almost like a carnival ride at this point, you know, from coupley to stadium and back, kind of thing. So, you know, it's a way, it's for public relation, more or less, you know? It's like you show the community, hey, you know what, this is for real. People actually riding, and then you start getting word of mouth out to the community, kind of thing of, hey, I wrote the rail back, hey, that thing is cool, yeah, you know? And I think when people do that, you know, and a lot of that is more, that suggestion was more for public, you know, public trust in the system, as you say, which seems to be lacking in these last couple of years, where all everybody's saying it costs too much, they're taking too long, you know, you know, all this negative stuff going on, it's a, it's a suggesting.
Sure, thanks for that suggestion, but Heart is solely responsible for the testing and preparing the system for revenue service. So that, I guess, any opening, you know, ceremonies or test rides on the system, that would be up to DTS. I'm not sure what their plans are to prepare the public for the first opening of the system, but I believe they do have some type of outreach plan to make sure the public is well aware of how to ride the system and to familiarize the public with riding it as well.
Thank you so much, Harry, have a good evening, and thank you for being with us this evening. Sorry it took so long to get to your presentation.
No problem.
Military units, single facilities, as well as our military representatives from the Army. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Any questions for our representatives? Are we, Mr. Baird, are we good on the water tanks on the Army property at AMR?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything, no one's, everybody's happy, so no complaints, nothing.
But I'll give you a nasty report, do you have anything that you want to report?
Yes, please, I have, sorry, thanks, everyone, for welcoming me back, it's good to be back. Happy New Year, Chair, Board members, neighbors. The do-outs from the last time, last board meeting, addressing a few of those, just to make sure that everything's on track and to address some of the issues that are still outstanding. So first, sorry, I need to introduce myself again, for those that don't know. Lieutenant Colonel Donnie Pratt, I'm the Deputy Brigade Commander for the Five Sixteenth Signal Brigade on Fort Shafter. So first item from Mr. Baird before, the floodlights, I know that you reached out to, and Mr. Donnelly was working the issue, is that resolved? No, it's not, okay, so we will definitely take that back. They anticipated a solution by mid-December, so if that's not done, we definitely will take that back to U.S. Army Garrison Hawaii. Okay. Item number two, the information, thanks for sharing the information, contact information with Mr. Garcia. We'll make sure that we reach out again and kind of duplicate effort to make sure that we try to get a answer on the. on the aviation question from previously with the helicopters flying over. Now, we have showed that also, and U S Army Garrison Hawaii is aware, and they are, they were looking into the situation as well, have not received an answer from them. But again, we will reach out to them and reemphasize trying to get an answer on what happened in that situation. I will share for members, so any aviation complaints, there are a couple of numbers that can be called for inquiries. They ask that as much information that you can capture to pass that along when you do call. Those two numbers are eight oh eight, six five six, three four eight seven. Second number is eight oh eight, six five six, three one five nine.
What department this is? Is this F A A or is this Army or?
I do not have that information, but I can get back to you with the information. I don't know if it's, let's see. I assume it's Army because that's where the. So, time, location, types of aircraft, and if you're able to take any pictures of the event. Okay, final item to address from last time. The inquiry on if we've learned anything from the mass emergency alarm from a couple of years ago, any lessons learned on that and what's being taken forward to ensure that doesn't happen again. So, the inquiry is sent to the Communications Director for Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, and we have not received a response at the time he's deployed the Hilo in response to the volcano eruption. So, again, though, we will reach back out on that issue and try to get an answer to that request as well. Okay. A couple of announcements also. So, U S Army Garrison Hawaii Morale Welfare and Recreation Division also has a hiring event on the thirty-first of January at Ali Manu Military Reservation, beginning at eight thirty A M. and going until two thirty. So, they will also be provisionally hiring on the spot into positions, and applicants are asked to have two references, proof of I D, social security card, resume or application, and they'll be able to be allowed onto A M R and apply for some jobs. On the fifth of January, U S Army Garrison Hawaii published their January Training Advisory that goes over what training is going on in the month of January and the locations for those trainings and the types of training that will be happening. So. You got that flyer? So, for Army Garrison, the majority of the training, actually, all the training is in and around Schofield Barracks, with the exception of unmanned aerial vehicles, which also go over into the west on the mountain ranges around Schofield Barracks as well. So, let's see, it's already passed, twelfth January. So, tomorrow, there's artillery and mortar live fire training at Schofield Barracks. Twelve, sixteen, and nineteen January, we have some helicopter training on East Range. Twelve to twenty-seven January, there's blank fire training going on at East Range on Schofield Barracks. And seventeen to twenty, twenty-three to thirty-one January, artillery and mortar live fire on Schofield Barracks. And then again, the U A S, the unmanned aircraft systems, they fly twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. But again, if there's any complaints that come in on those, please pass the information to those, through those numbers that were provided. Okay, I'm open for any questions from the board.
Yeah, where in particular parts of live training, you know, meeting and all that kind of stuff?
It's on Schofield Barracks.
What, what, the geograph, like, is it closer towards the Waianae Mountain side? Is it closer, you know, it's like, because I think some people are kind of concerned about that.
So, the, right, shooting out of the ranges and such, yeah, there's really very, very, very minuscule possibility of that, and only in the event of like a catastrophic failure. So, the areas where they're shot are completely contained within the area on Schofield Barracks, and it is well away from any civilian population, correct?
Thank you.
Yep.
So, you know, that community meetings are already happening and probably continue to be happening over the next couple of years regarding bases. Right? Now, our communities, because they're not in necessarily these areas, these chapters of, but many of the Army bases are, yes. There's a lot today's newspaper and article about Oahu Loa, which is an active site for you folks. So, just, yeah, you guys know that we know that the presence, the Army's presence and these bases are being considered by communities. And at some point, this board may take up a position on the continued bases for Army.
Yes.
Then also wanted to, yeah, also wanted to let you know that there are opportunities for all the branches, but I guess we focus, we talk so much to the Navy, so. But to get to know the community a lot better.
Yes.
Through cultural orientations, not profit that I work for, we do those kinds of things, but it's, you guys could outreach on your own, and I would highly recommend that because of the largest number of people here in Hawaii across the state. And it would be highly beneficial if you guys acted upon some type of culture orientation that adds to you guys onboarding newcomers that come in because you guys have many of them, and the impact to the communities, then also the impact to the service members themselves.
Yes.
A lot of attention can be alleviated by, you know, some exchanges that happen that are planned between community and.
That's a, it's great feedback. Thank you. Yeah, we'll definitely take that forward. And I know for our command, and then also, this goes directly to Major General Ryan, the Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division Commander, our update goes directly to him, and he reads every single one of them. So, we'll include that in.
We've been able to work, just for us, we've been able to work with our force. That gets the small.
Yes.
You guys have big ones, and then it's the Navy guys, you know, that reads. So, if, you know, if you guys have an opportunity to do that and let your senior management know that, it'd be a great thing to engage. It's an easy win.
Yes.
Where it doesn't take much.
I agree.
I share just two quick things that we do do. We have a, there's a cultural orientation for the Hawaiian culture that all active duty are eligible and encouraged to go to when they arrive, and it includes family members. And it's led by the Pacific Center of Security Studies that's on Fort DeRusi in Waikiki. And they beat it. It's a beautiful, wonderful horse that's free for all of them. And then also, we have the Garrison Hawaii and Twenty-Fifth I D Joint with the Partnership of Ohana, and that has a, an arm of that is dedicated to working with the land and the leases and cleaning up and Oahu Loa. Big focus on that, where they host rides for N G Os and other organizations that need to look at it. There's a request process for that, but we have the idea, and then we should have recommendations for that specific organization for that, or to start engaging more organizations like that.
I would say from my perspective, definitely, we can do a better job of advertising those things because I know for me personally, I came in, well, it was in the middle of COVID, but I've been here for two years, and when I am processed, I didn't hear any, nothing about that. So, we'll make sure that the information gets out there.
I think we do a one R program, you know, one R that mixes right in with their regular, whether it's a day-long, a pre-day-long incoming natural processing, which is kind of fit right in there exposed.
Yes.
And then they're able to follow up whenever they want, but it's kind of like they have, they have to sit there and watch it and be, you know, giving it rather than making it optional for them. It doesn't have to take weeks, be sure that, and then they can.
Okay, just be ready next month to talk about helicopters, because we're really, really late, and I don't want to get into tonight, so, but come next month. We will reach out. Call me up. I'll be out there with my camera too, taking the pictures and passing the information. Yeah, we'll track that down.
It's a blinking light now.
Yeah, if it is military, you know, we'll definitely try to, we'll try to track it down.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant Colonel Pratt, Mr. Kim, for joining us this evening. We appreciate your being here. And thank you to our Navy partners who went up earlier. Thank you so much for your continued partnership here with us. We look forward to the use of relationship with you guys all and keeping the dialogue open. And we look forward to that report. Hopefully, it gets circulated soon. Moving on, I'd like to, if there's no objection from the board, I'd like to defer any action or discussion on items number ten, A through G, to the next meeting. Now, this is Ali Manu Salt Lake, Bosso Village Airport, Neighbor of the Board number eighteen, regular meeting will be held on Thursday, February ninth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. at this location, so I'm still, I followed it, it's directed. It is Ohana Baptist Church. It will be in the library next, we're going to continue to stay in this room. I think it's more intimate setting. Videoclip board meetings are aired on the level channel forty-nine, on the fourth Saturday of the month and at nine P M. And on the seventh and fourth Friday, the one that's seven A M. Being that there's no further business at this board we discuss, we are now.